Town of Intan respectfully acknowledges that it is located on Treaty Six territory and Maiki Nation Region Number Four. These are the traditional territories and ancestral lands of indigenous peoples, including the Plains Creek First Nations, Assinawatchee, Winawatch, Rocky Mountain First Nations, Stony, Sutina, Dakota, De Nissuline, Salto, Mountain Maiki, Bichi, and many other communities that continue to enrich the land on which the Town of Intan was established. With this sentiment, I'd like to call today's committee of the whole meeting to order. Counsel, are there any changes to the agenda? Counselor Ross?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was wondering if counsel had entertained adding mutual performance as we didn't complete it last week. But this was a good opportunity to add to the agenda under the total section, please. 5.3.
5.3 mutual performance discussion. Okay, thank you, Counselor Ross. Counsel, any other changes? None, administration? Counsel, any discussion or motions? Counselor McGinn?
I'd like to move that we adopt the agenda of the committee, pardon me, the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting for April 26th as amended.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Counsel, those in favor? Security man, that brings us to citizens with counsel. Are there any citizens here who would like to speak today? No? Any citizens joining? They don't have to be there. Any citizens via Zoom would like to speak?
No, there's not.
Thank you. That brings us to our first delegation presentation for today. Gerard Redmond Community Catholic School Crosswalk Parent Advisory Committee.
Thanks so much for having us. Do you want to say it or you?
Oh, go ahead. Oh, okay. So as most of you are aware, we have some issues in front of Gerard Redmond School. The crosswalk there is quite dangerous, actually. There's a big danger there. Since mid-2019, I've kind of been back and forth with emails of the town. Just to address the crosswalks, they're not quite visible, as you'll see in a small little slideshow in a moment. And we've put in a request to perhaps, if those overhanging crosswalks can be brought in there with perhaps some speed bumps, proper signage. It was noticed that the crosswalk signage isn't really visible to drivers. And with having novice drivers, because it is a high school, so there's those beginners that are just learning to drive. And some of them, I guess, believe they're at Daytona. So they're speeding away, and also it's on a curve. So you're coming up to a curve, and where the school buses have to park, the crosswalk goes in between them. So there's a lot of things going on for the drivers. And if you add in weather, the late, like the darker mornings in winter, it's just a disaster waiting to happen. We have had bylaw officers present. There have been a lot of near misses. A lot of children have almost been hit. And we were also looking at the crosswalks at the corner of, the intersection of Leed and Mountain Street. We feel they're on the wrong side of the street. They should be on the west side, right? Yeah. Also too, right now, they are currently, one is covered by trees. So you can't really see it when it is flashing. And that's also another disaster waiting to happen. We feel that the lights that are currently there don't really serve very many kids. It would better serve kids if it was on the other side. Do you have anything else?
Um, not really. Something sort of more complication. You mentioned a couple of things. One was the fact that you can't do drivers, and that's definitely concerning. This car that you see here, this SUV is actually there. It lives there. So I believe that the people who own the SUV live in the house right there. You can go to the next one. Thank you. So we kind of, I kind of looked at, hey, what's the height of that? I went out and measured it to see and to see. So you can't see kids that are standing there, and you can see the sign on the other side coming this way. It's even more dangerous coming the other way, because you're coming around at a corner. And we've had people drive by with the buses there, with the stop signs out, with the arms down, and drive by every single bus. And I have called the RCMP a couple of times about those kinds of things. They said unless I bought it on videotape, there was nothing I could do about it. We have talked to bylaw, and they definitely are present there, and I really do appreciate that. The RCMP have been out a lot more. But we have really little kids. So if you look at, for example, the average height of a fifth grader, I measured a couple, they're 110 centimeters. If you go to the next one. And we have two little girls who live on the other side of the street that cross here every single morning. So in the wintertime, say from November until about February, I've actually had to get lights that my staff uses with their high vis vests that they have on. And we've now put flashing lights because people don't see us with high vis vests on. Right? And so as we're trying to get those kids across the street to catch the bus, we're putting ourselves in danger, and there's been near misses even with staff, even with adults who are careful. So this is an ongoing concern. I mean, the sign is there and the crosswalk is painted, but in the wintertime, there's no crosswalk painted. They don't see that. And the sign, although it's there, it's just not large enough. And we're kind of looking for something that looks more like the corner of Moline and Mountain Street, you know, Colling and Mountain Street, that overhanging one like they have at Mountain View, for example.
And the ones that were installed at Saint Braker.
Right? Just to have that visibility a little bit more, because we've had several kids. We had a kid actually get hit by a car and ended up with a brain injury. That was going across Mountain Street into Ristler area. That happened a few years ago. So it's not just speculation that this could happen. It actually has happened to our school and to our students. And so we would just like really appreciate kind of the opportunity to put this forth to you again. I know that this started with my predecessor's predecessor. I'm the principal of the school. So this is like, we're now into the third principal who's now still supporting our PUC and trying to bring this to your attention and hopefully rectify the situation. I think that was minutes.
You don't have to show.
Well, I was like, you have a minute with it on my bike. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you.
Counsel? Counselor Taylor?
Can't quite remember what those other ones you're talking about look like. I remember what the mountain view one, it's really bright, flashy.
Right, and it goes across the road.
Well, it was all right.
It overhangs and goes across the road. So you're, you can, I mean, if you miss that.
Because the mountain view one is so bright and flashy, right?
Yeah.
You gotta be fine.
Well, and the one on Mountain Street though, too, isn't an overhanging one. It's still just one on the side of the road.
The one at Mountain and Moline.
Mountain and Ristler and all like that, yeah.
This would be equally as visible on a coolish.
Yeah, so yeah, I'd invite you, if you want to come and stop in the office, I'll take you on a tour and kind of show you some of the issues that we have and how little the kids are that come and catch the bus there, because it's sort of a depot for our kids going to Saint Brakes. So we have kindergarten kids that, and they, they just don't look. They, they, you know, they get excited to catch the bus and they're zip it out. And so there's all, like, we're there and we supervise, but like I said, it's just a potential accident, and I don't want to see that happen to any of the children.
Counsel. Say, like a follow-up or a different one? Kind of all but. Counselor Ross?
Yeah, I just, I have a couple of questions, but one in particular with the mountain view. The, with that crosswalk, when you say the other side of the road, are you talking about like it's where the trees are now? But on the other side, like keep it on that street, just push them over onto the.
Yes, yeah, the one on Mountain Street and Moline. Yeah, it's, it should just be right across that street. So then the kids don't have to cross the street again to get to our school. So you got the same size as our school is.
Yeah, there's a lot of people coming, yeah, from the larger portion of Mountain Street coming this way to the school.
Okay.
So.
Okay, that makes sense. Great, thank you. I'll be back and keep this.
Counselor Taylor, your counsel, then Counselor Ross.
What about the sneaky traffic on one side of the road? That road always seems to have time traffic on both sides of the road.
So you mean like stop parking on one side?
During school hours, like wouldn't that be equally as, make things safe? Why wouldn't it cause that?
Um, I suppose because I'm not sure that the neighbors wouldn't want the street parking.
Yeah.
That would be, I think if you block that off all during the day from, I mean, probably what, eight till four? I don't know what your neighbors would say about that. I suspect they would not be very happy with their school if we made that no parking during the day. Although, I mean, our kids have enough parking within our school ground, but I know the neighbors don't because they park our school ground too.
Also too, I think flashing lights gets everybody's attention.
And it's the nighttime. I mean, really, it is dark at our school until probably quarter to night, and our kids arrive between eight o'clock and 8:20 generally, and in like those winter months, it's nighttime up.
Counselor McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me, so, I mean, during the winter, that crosswalk is essentially covered in snow. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, you would be the only school in town with elementary age students that don't have an overhanging flashing light system. Is that correct?
Yes.
Counselor McGinn, Counselor Ross?
I'm just curious, and maybe this is more to administration too, I don't know, but if we were to set them up there, I'm wondering, like, when you come around the other way or on the curve, is there enough room that you're coming around that you, to see the flashing lights and get stopped there? So I'm just curious if that's, if that, you know, like, would there have to be something on the other side of the curve to at least?
Well, are they not two-sided? The overhanging flashing?
Well, they're two-sided, but I'm just wondering if people coming around the curve, you're coming around the curve, and then to, you all of a sudden, boom, you see around the curve, you see. But I'm trying to think of how much distance is there, but there seems like enough, but.
If you want to go back to the picture?
Yeah, I did propose to before, perhaps just a little flashing light thing, crosswalk and you on the other side of the curve.
Yeah.
Yet I don't see them.
I can certainly measure the distance. I would say approximately, what would it be, eight meters? Maybe like 25 yards-ish? Put that into metrics, so 20 meters maybe.
I mean, theoretically, if I may, I mean, theoretically, we should be driving at 38, like coming around here.
Well, and definitely, yeah.
You know, to come around there, see the flashing light, kind of stop, that's the only difference.
But that's the direction that someone came around, literally, and went past all of the buses. And it was a person in town who works for a, I don't know, during one of the classes here, but works for a company that had it, their car was wrapped in their name. And, and iPhone.
What was her name?
Right? And we, and iPhone had said, this is the person that was driving the car, and their name is on their car, and I saw them in their car, and they were like, well, unless you really get a video of it. So that wasn't very helpful, so I'm not sure what else to do. And they came from that direction specifically. I think visibility is the biggest issue.
Thank you, Counselor Ross. Counsel, any further comments or questions? Counselor McGinn?
Well, I have a question for administration really before anything else. I think for myself, this is one of those issues where I know this has been brought up in the past between the PHC, the school, and former administration. I guess to our interim CAO, procedurally, what's our best process? Because I absolutely agree that there's a problem. So I, like, I mean, is this something that's on the books for the town still that we just need to execute on, or does it need will of counsel?
If I could, sir, through you to the members of the committee, actually, 5.1 is going to be an opportunity to have a bit of a discussion on that. And we are, we are not just recognizing the importance of this. We are here and prepared to present a possible solution or solutions for the consideration of counsel at a future meeting.
We also think it would be helpful if we had, and something that is mentioned in your notes, sort of having a race section or speed bump section that might be as helpful, like you said beforehand, to remind you that that light is there and to put that into a place so that we could slow the people down on that street.
Counselor McGinn, Counselor Parrish?
So this presupposes this 85 grand coming from the AT reserve. How, what's the, how much in there?
If we could, sir, we will get to that when we get to 5.1.
Okay.
If that's acceptable. Matt is with us, and he'll be able to speak to that. He was investigating what's available.
Counselor Taylor?
Another point I'm saying, the second part of the proposal, is to move something from someplace to another place?
So there's, there's sort of two things. When we talked to Winston and Matt, we talked about our, the direct one that's right in front of our school and the possibility of putting the overhang. We also suggested that it might also be helpful for us to move the crosswalk that is currently on Mountain Street to be on the west side of Ristler and not on the east side of Ristler. Well, Moline, and then where it turns into Ristler, it's actually on the, yeah, so Moline and, it's Fairfax, sorry, Fairfax.
Moline, Fairfax, and Mountain. Now, the crosswalk sign on the other side of the street, they want to break from that side of the street to this side.
We want to move to the west side.
Right.
And it's going to be on this side of the street because.
Well, then it's on the same side as the school. So then it saves us crossing down, have the kids across, at a lot of us as well.
As people are coming and going into the school, like in the morning and after school, there's a lot of traffic turning
Yes.
west on to Mountain Street. So with having the crosswalks there, we just think it would be best for that to happen, like for it to be on the west side.
But in our wish list, it's the one in front of the school that we've really been focused on right now.
Yes. Yeah, there was also talks of having the bus lane pull into the field that's kind of in front of the school there as well. And, yeah, I didn't see it in the direction request either, so, yeah. There's been different scenarios we've discussed.
Proceed, O'Hamlin?
Thank you, sir, through you to the members of the committee. Administration, when we get to 5.1, I believe we have a bit more detail in terms of some mapping, and I think they even are going to kind of walk us through the areas through Google Earth. So that'll help us to better understand just what we are discussing here. And I think it is fair to say that administratively, I think we're mostly in agreement with what the parent council is bringing forward. And so we'll be able to speak to that and give a little more detail here when we get to the next agenda.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair. Just in short, thanks for your patience. And I, I know it's just one of those things where it's back and forth transitioning between multiple staff. It's, thank you.
Thank you for all this.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Counsel? Okay, nothing further from counsel. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you, everyone.
If you guys want to handle our first action.
I'm going to go to a different meeting.
I'm sure you'll be informed with the council's discussion.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Happy to meet you, everyone.
When is the next parent advisory?
It is maybe, I want to say 18th, is that a Tuesday with my calendar?
Yes.
Min May is the next one, yeah. So we'll look for it. 17th is the, is the, oh, it's the 17th, I think. Is that right? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
16th.
Yeah. That brings us to reports from administration. 5.1 Gerard Redmond Community Catholic School Crosswalk Safety and Safety 4.
Thank you, sir. We are on page three of your agenda package, and I'm actually going to ask our director of protective services, our fire chief, to take us through this item. Matt, are you with us?
Hello? I, I need to do a volume check. Is my mic working properly?
We can hear you. If you can turn it up, that would probably help.
That's a good question on this archaic microphone I have. I might not be able to. I'll just speak louder. If that works.
Yep, you're good.
Okay, well, thank you, ICO Hammond, through the chair to all of committee. This report that's before you is to address a longstanding concern for crosswalk safety at the Father Gerard Redmond School. As we heard from the delegation just, just now, this has been a matter of concern for a couple of years now, actually probably about three years. Both Mr. Rousseau and myself visited the site recently to gain a better understanding of the area and their concerns, and to gauge the severity of the safety concerns in preparation for today. It needs to be noted, though, that proper signage is in place. Speed restrictions are in the school zone there. There is existing flashing lights at the intersection of concern. And there is enforcement in place, both the RCMP, our bylaw officers, as well as the automatic traffic enforcement. That is one of the zones that they address. So there is, there is a presence there every, every school day. But there are several other schools that they also have to patrol. The lights at the intersection of Fairfax, Maline, Moline, I'm not sure how to pronounce that, and Mountain would be better positioned if they were relocated to the south crosswalk. This would serve to increase visibility of the lights themselves, as well as to encourage pedestrian traffic to the correct side of Maline Drive, reducing the need for the majority of the students to cross on the crosswalk directly in front of the school. So that's a big safety matter right there. In addition, administration really recommends that the installation of the flashing crosswalk signage at the crosswalk in front of the school adjacent to the parking lot. And that would be a cantilevered sign like we have at all the other schools in town, where they have elementary students. At both locations, we recommend wrapping the posts with high-visibility reflective coloring to indicate to the drivers in the area the actual location of the crosswalk. At that location, they have topography working against them as well. When you're approaching the school, you're actually coming downhill. And anybody that's in front of the legally parked vehicles at that crosswalk are not visible to the drivers. So it's, it's very important that eventually we get some sort of flashing LED lights to indicate that crosswalk. So as I said, the enforcement practices are currently in place in all school zones, including Father Redmond School. And we really want to take a phased approach with engineered solutions, some traffic pacifying measures, and some signage changes could be implemented with limited costs right now. The traffic pacifying measures could be planned for in the future, in the 2023 operating projects. And the relocation of the crosswalk sign at Mountain and Maline could be done at a minimal cost in 2022. Changes to road elevations and that cantilevered LED sign, we'd have to plan for that in future budget. So for the benefit of the committee, we do have the ability to walk, walk you through with Google Earth. Winston, you're there. Can we, can we pull that up for the benefit of committee?
Sure. Thanks, Chief. Just get Debbie to share her screen. So Debbie will drive and I will speak. So thank you through to the chair, the chair to all of the committee. What with your facing west on Mountain Street with this view? And the delegation has just told you about the existing lighting, the flashing lights. So these are the ones with the little hand where Debbie is showing us right now. And this is where the kids cross. So two things. One, as you can see, the tree on your right-hand side of the screen often conceals the flashing light. Two, the lights are far too short. So it is not really conspicuous for the unassuming motorists, though the speed limit down there would show that you should be reducing. And at that point, the delegation has just recommended, and we were out on site with the delegation, that if you take that zebra crossing or pedestrian crossing, and you shift it further west, you're going to the other side of the, the, the intersection just as that arrow is showing right now. What that does, it actually, and Chief, the fire chief, has just told us that there's a topography elevation difference between where the existing sign or the flashing lights are to where that median and the connection of the proposed walkthrough would be. So if we just stand still at this point, you'll see that where the arrow is, we're going to take the existing zebra crossing and bring it to the new location as shown on your screen. That will help the students to stay on the same side of the school, but will give them a better refuge from trying to cross twice. And then as we move up into Moline Drive, so I would just want to add one thing in case counsel may wonder, if we do shift this post to the west as indicated, those are all solar illuminated signage. So there is no underground conduiting that needs to be either trenched or trenchlessly done. You basically have to abandon the two paths on which the two flashing lights are positioned. Take it west and then basically pour two new pads. That, that would be the only cost, and of course, having to black out those existing zebra crossings and create your new crossing. Now, where the hand is and the arrow is showing, you'll see the elevation difference, though with the eye, it is not possible to see. But there's quite a difference when you drive that road coming from the west going east or the west. So that is that change that is proposed. When you proceed up Moline Drive approaching, you'll see that we have a slight incline to the street. You will notice that on the right-hand side of the screen, there's limited, if to no pedestrian refuge or sidewalk, so to speak. And the left-hand side does give you a sidewalk that makes it safer in winter and summer for kids and parents and strollers to go on the left-hand side of the road. As we pass a little further up the street, you'll see a sign that will say, slow down, and it's a 30-kilometer sign. If you're doing 31 kilometers, it will flash at you. Even with a vehicle stationed there, it is high enough to show forth that you're off too fast. And there is an opportunity to raise those slightly, the signage, with the wrapping of that pole as the chief just indicated would be part of the solution. What we're seeking to do to have all the poles wrapped with a reflective yellow or orange warning is to have it more conspicuous for the driver that may not be adhering to situational awareness being in a school zone. So as we move further up Moline Drive, you will see that we are still shy of sidewalk on the right-hand side. It makes it very hard for kids to stay. They're actually walking in the speed line. If I may put it that way. Moving further ahead past that speed sign, you're coming to the existing crossing. And as the delegation quite rightly pointed out, that little SUV parked there is, is one of the residents, and they quite rightly are parking where they should be parking in front of their home. But you'll have very little pedestrian refuge for a kid that has gotten off that curb and wanting to cross. By the time he or she crosses, they're likely in the path of an oncoming vehicle. So we, what we're suggesting at this point is to, to, to the left of the street is to have a vertical post that will go with a cantilever across Midweather Street that would have a face on both ends of a flashing light as well as a sign, pedestrian crossing, and anything that would cause people to realize that you are approaching a a crossing or a zebra crossing or a pedestrian crossing. The reason why cantilever, for two reasons or more, the primary reason is that we have no space or limited space on the resident's side on the opposite side of that road. At the same time, we don't want to limit the residents with further infrastructure on their sidewalk. We have sufficient on the Gerard Redmond side to put that cantilevered flashing light. So that's the improvement we seek to do there. If Debbie, if you could just scroll back to the green space towards the school, and I just want to show the committee, if you go to the left, yep. No. Yeah, there we go. So as, as the committee views where these trees are, the two large trees, we do have an option, and this is a future consideration, where if it could, now there is a fire heightened somewhere close by as well. We could have a bus lay-by or a bus, instead of turning lane, if I may call it that way, so that the bus completely is off the road. And I'll still allow students to cross in a safe way. That way, we're opening up the road for pedestrians to do so safely. But that's a future consideration, and that, of course, is going to mean a lot of dirt work. And it's not sort of recommended right now. Going back towards the crosswalk, Debbie, as we go further up Moline Drive, I just want to show the committee that distance from the crosswalk to where you start taking the turn, I believe it was Counselor House that asked the question. That is about 56.4 meters to the crosswalk back. That's 185 feet to convert it to Imperial. So 56 meters would give you enough time to respond. However, if you go further down Moline, Debbie, if you're just on the, go to the bend, and you'll see towards that green, there's a sign right there by the green box above, and that's a 30-kilometer sign, a flashing sign. So any approaching vehicles from that end east to west will be warned that they are doing about 30. So that will cause them to slow down. You hit the curve, the curve where you're not able to accelerate. The lights are flashing over the cantilever. And that will give you enough time to say that they can slow down. So coming around that bend, you have thirty, hopefully. You'll see the lights flashing and you've got enough response time if you're doing thirty plus, which you should not be doing in the first place. But that's just to help oncoming traffic and especially in winter when that crosswalk is no longer visible and covered with snow and ice potentially. The other, finally, just to, as we face the crosswalk, and Debbie, if you wanted to go a little closer to that crosswalk, one solution that we could look at is to have a speed calming mechanism right at the point where Debbie's mouse is and have it as a pappusoidal raised pavement color coded to be red. And then that is your crosswalk in conjunction with the overhead cantilevered flashing lights. That would be for the next phase. So what administration has done is that we looked at, this is an unsafe situation. It is been long coming, and we are aware of this. To mitigate and to address the main concerns and to get it safer is to do as the chief has just outlined in his recommendation that we move on the Mountain Street side, the lights to the west, repaint the crosswalk, put on conspicuous stickers and reflective membrane on the poles and raise some of the signs to be more conspicuous. And then the overhead cantilevered signs, and that's basically the scope that will be about eighty-five thousand. Now, that eighty-five thousand is rounded up. It's probably around seventy-eight thousand, but with escalation and where supply chain things are going these days. We estimated eighty-five thousand to be sufficient should we undertake the works this year, which is still very possible based on the team within infrastructure that have viewed the scope of work and talked to the suppliers as well. So with that, I'll hand it back to the chair. Any questions? Be open to that.
Yes, so thank you, Mr. Russo. If we could leave that up in case the committee wants to refer to that when they question us, but administration is asking committee to direct administration to bring back to regular meeting of Council May third, twenty twenty-two for council's consideration to add lighted crosswalk infrastructures to the Father Gerard Redmond Community Catholic School to the twenty twenty-two capital plan and that the funding of eighty-five thousand dollars be taken from the ATE reserve fund. And with that, if committee has any questions, we'll be pleased to answer those.
Thank you, Chief Bodrop and Mr. Russo, Mayor Michaels, and then Councilor McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gentlemen, great presentation. In principle, I support this a lot. There's one potential upgrade that I see that may be of value. My question to administration, the moving the lights on Mountain Street from the east side to the west side, what would it cost to upgrade those lights? Because that seems like old technology. The newer lights are, for lack of a better term, really flashy and they grab your attention. These old school type lights, you don't really see well when it's sunny. I drive there often. It's not something that we have been putting in our community recently. So if we wanted to upgrade those, since we're going to be going in on the ground installing new ones, what would it cost to upgrade those to something more technologically friendly for twenty twenty-two?
I will defer to Mr. Russo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Chief. Through to the committee, to Mayor Michaels. You're probably looking at, if you're wanting to say, if I understand your question correctly, we remove the existing lights, we don't repurpose them, and we put in more technologically improved lighting. You're probably looking at about a touch of between thirty-eight thousand to fifty thousand. That's what you'll be looking at.
Okay, thank you for that.
Mayor Michaels, Councilor McGee, then Councilor Levers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, gentlemen, thank you very much. That was a really thorough presentation. My question comes on page two of three of the report, just above the blue bar that says implications for decision. And really, it's a procedural question that I just need to make sure I understand. So it says relocation of the crosswalk sign at Mountain and Moline could be done at minimal costs in twenty twenty-two, okay? Changes to road elevations or the addition of LED warning lights would require a project plan and budget for twenty twenty-three. Those LED warning lights, are you talking about the LED warning lights, the cantilever that would go near to the school, or are we talking over Mountain Street itself?
Through the chair to answer that question, Counselor, I was under the impression that that the cantilevered lights at the main crosswalk would be next year. But that may have been a miscommunication between Mr. Russo and myself.
Well, if I could clarify, Mr. Chair, what my major concern is. Basically, the question that I was trying to figure out with the report was the folks from Gerard said, you know, their number one concern was the crosswalk right in front of the school. With the project plan in front of us, does that get them the overhead light at the school in twenty twenty-two?
If I may, through the chair, thank you, Chief. Councilor McGee, you are correct that the cantilevered solution is meant to be for twenty twenty-two at the Gerard Redmond Crosswalk, the one we're looking at right now.
Perfect. Thanks for the clarification. That wraps it up for me. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Gosh, my reserve level question now then is where is that AT reserve at?
Matt, can you give us an idea in our discussions with finance what the balance of the AT budget is, or excuse me, the AT reserve is?
Thank you very much. Through the chair to answer your counselor, the AT reserve balance currently sits at six hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and twenty-five and fifty-nine cents.
Thank you. Councilor Levers, Mayor Michaels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess my question for administration. Any insights or, I guess, information on perhaps painting the new crosswalks with reflective paint? It's something that I've heard in the community that if we're going to paint, why not use reflective paint that works in the evenings? Any comments or thoughts on that?
Through the chair, that is not a bad idea. We have to keep in mind that for the majority of the school year during school zone times, we are in darkness or semi-darkness. So reflective paint does make sense. But also those same school years, probably fifty percent of that, there is snow cover on the ground, so it limits the reflectivity. But Mr. Russo is more of the roads expert, so I'll defer to him.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to speak again and to council and to all of the committee. So in our quotation, when we looked at the overhead flashing signs, we also looked at putting down a thermoplastic, which a crosswalk paint that will have the reflective pebbles in it as well. So what that does, two, it does reflect when there's not too much snow on there. Two, it is also longer living as you go over with plows. And you've got about, you know, based on my experience, you've got, you get about seven to eight years out of that sort of crosswalk paint that we're using in terms of the thermoplastic. To give you an idea what the thermoplastic is, it is basically the striping that Alberta Transportation uses on most of the highways these days. So they're doing it in a phased approach. It costs a bit more, but it does last longer and it does have the qualities that Mayor Michaels referred to. So that's included in our quotation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for that answer. That's great. I'm assuming that's only for Moline, a road for Mountain Street. If we're switching the crosswalk to the west side, that would be normal paint and then it would, or is that also going to be the new reflective plastic material that you spoke to?
If I may, Mr. Chair, just to answer Mayor Michaels, correct, it would be the thermoplastic. That was one quotation my team obtained. So if the prices hold, as we know, we're in sort of escalation time of pricing because of supply chain. But we will be going aiming for the thermoplastic at a minimum. That helps us with maintenance and annual line striping. If we don't have to do this for five to seven years and counting, that's better for the maintenance team to focus on other areas where we don't get to typically.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Michaels, Counselor Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So based on what I've heard so far and all the thought that's gone into this project, I'd like to move the committee direct administration to bring back to a regular meeting of Council May third, twenty twenty-two for council's consideration to add lighted crosswalk infrastructure at the Gerard Redmond Catholic School to the twenty twenty-two capital budget and the funding of eighty-five thousand dollars be for the AT reserve fund. You know, I mean, the AT reserve fund, this is exactly what this fund is for, is safety. You know, it has been an ongoing issue obviously in this, in this area. And the fact that this is the last school in our community that does have this, well, I shouldn't say that, our Harry College doesn't have that. But based on the fact that there is some safety concerns there and based on the fact that to the thoroughness of the report, you know, I'm in favor of this. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ross.
Thank you, sir. And just, I would like to add that if council, or excuse me, if the committee were to take a look at this May third, it would be our intention to bring as an option the higher visibility lighting as a possible option. We'll try to get an estimate on that for Mountain Street to see if that's something that council may wish to fund as well on top of this. I will reiterate, and I think all council is aware, or all committee is aware of this. And that is that we are dealing with something that's timely. So we would want to move on this very quickly so we could be undertaking this work during the summer break. It's often when we want to be working around school zones as when the students aren't here and that we can get in and do some of this work. It's going to be necessary to have this installed for the fall and the winter of the school.
Thank you, sir. I have a comment and also a question. My comment or in support of Counselor Hans's motion, I think back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, the fire hall asked for eighty-seven thousand dollars to put crosswalk or overhead lights and flashing lights in at the fire hall to protect the equipment, protect the firefighters when they respond to a call. And I have no issue at all spending that same amount of money to help our children, our teachers, and volunteers in putting up this lighting. And I'll go back and to my question, sir, if there's more.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm fully in support of the direction. I appreciate it being put forward. I would also just like to take a moment to express my appreciation to administration. I think it was an excellent report and the fact that it was done in collaboration with, you know, a really well planned out and thought out presentation from members of our community and public. It was just, you know, it was a nice combination. I think it really sets up the case very clearly for the community on why this is an important project. So thanks for that.
Thank you, sir. To administration, the company that does the reflective painting to crosswalks in St. Albert and Screws Grove, they're the same company that we employ to come here every year and do our white crosswalks. And they also have the patent on that, on the reflective painting. So are those the people that Winston was referencing?
If I could, Winston, I'm not sure if you've heard Counselor Race's question. The company that we currently use for our line painting and our sidewalk painting, is that the same company that has this technology we're speaking of for these school zone crossings?
Yep. Through to the chair, to all of the committee, and specifically to the question that I see O'Handlin has just reiterated to me. The type of thermoplastic that we're talking about is not just proprietary to a certain line painting striping company. It is an off-the-shelf product that all line painting contractors can harness. It's just a slightly more in cost. So when we put out our bid to do the work, we'll specify it's a thermoplastic with a beaded component to it. And then we'll get the pricing in. We don't have a a specific contractor that we use. It so happened that over the last three years, I think, that we had the same contractor come through with the best price. So it is a market-related product and we can specify it as to what we desire the product to be.
Counselor Race, Counselor Taylor.
Of this project too. Oh, by the way, I like the technology. I've seen that a few times. This makes me feel like it's summer, so I like that too. My question is that is it eight thousand five hundred dollar difference between the between the quote, what you're asking for money? I don't mind that, because that's kind of in the ten percent range. But you did mention that that was for supply chain issues, which leads me to believe that this quote, which is only eighteen days old, seventy-six thousand dollars, they could come back and ask for more. This quote, as long as we do this quote within thirty days, this is what they get to charge. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. And if I could add to that too, before your answers. I didn't see the reflective sidewalk paint in there too, from sorry, either. So is that included somewhere else? Is that additional to the whole administration?
Yeah. So through to the chair, to the rest of the committee, the reflective thermoplastic should be and is included in the eighty-five thousand. The allowance that we were made was a recommendation by the supplier, not knowing, of course, exactly if council was going to go with a full scope or partial scopes. So for argument's sake, that you may have, you could decide to say, let's leave Mountain to twenty twenty-three, and we only do the Moline improvements. And so because of the economy of scales changing, the supplier has given us a scalable amount of eighty-five thousand. Now, while that changed between now and May the third and when the implementation, there is that likelihood, things are changing by the day. But my team will go back after this evening and try and pin down that price. And if there's going to be a marginal difference compared to what we indicated tonight, to what comes back in May the third, we will reflect that accordingly.
So Taylor.
Boy, I'm confused. This says quotes valid for thirty days. What's that mean?
To admit, could you, did you hear that?
I did not, sorry.
For a Counselor Taylor said that he noted on the quote that it says it's valid for thirty days. So he's just wondering if they can be held with that, wondering what that means.
So through to the chair, to Counselor Taylor. Yes, the quote is out for thirty days. That's what they can guarantee us the cost would be by the time that, so if we give them the yes tomorrow, that number stays. But because May the third would be greater than thirty days, that means there could be an escalation just to help council a little bit. And just today, we've heard on certain elements in terms of cost, some folks in terms of steel prices have gone up. And we've seen seventy-five to eighty percent change in pricing that one of suppliers just shared with us today. Now, not to react to every bit that we hear, but it is a reality in the system this year that we will see prices escalate. But we are going to pin the price down. We will say that we'll likely get a decision on May the third, that could they fix their price? And if that's the case, and it's not more, we will advise council as well. But I'm pretty confident that the price should not swing greater than eighty-five based on the extra cushion that's already in there unless something really happens in the market. But I am doubtful based on the conversations we had with the supplier, but we will double check for May the third.
Just a point order to correct. May third is within the thirty days of the quote, the date of the quote is April eighth.
Just through to the chair, we will check that Counselor Taylor to make sure that everything holds. I'm seeing quotes these days that they're saying they will not guarantee anything above seven days, even though that quote says thirty days. So we will hold them to it. That's what we typically do. And we just want to make sure that we double check with them because things are changing by the day as we speak.
Thank you. Just before I move on, I just want to verify too, I'm sure, I'm sure I heard you say it, but I believe you said the eighty-five thousand that's budgeted is sufficient to cover the quote and the reflective painting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Committee, is there anything further? Any other questions? If not, we have the motion. You could see the motion. Thank you. Councilor Hauss has moved the committee direct administration to bring back to a regular meeting of councilmaker two thousand and twenty-two for council's consideration to add light at crosswalk infrastructure at the Gerard Redmond Community Catholic School to the two thousand and twenty-two capital plan and that the funding eighty-five thousand dollars be from the AT reserve fund.
Sorry, sir. I am just wondering if council may consider. This comes back for action May third, and I'm wondering if council might allow us to take the eighty-five thousand out and simply bring you options. I mentioned that there may be some additional options that may take us over that eighty-five thousand amount. This will still be ultimately decided by council. And when I say, maybe just to clarify, we had mentioned the possibility of maybe changing out the light standards on Mountain to something that's the newer technology, higher visibility, and flashing more of those had costs associated. Council will be determining the actual cost May third. And I would just, I would, I would ask council to consider not tying us to an eighty-five thousand dollar amount here if one of those options might exceed eighty-five thousand. And where I'm suggesting the eighty-five thousand could be exceeded is the idea of rather than relocating the two standards on Mountain, we might add two new ones on Mountain. That would still be one of the options, but.
Thank you for the suggestion, I C O Hamlin. So committee, there's a suggestion from administration to remove the dollar value, value from the proposed motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know I spoke to that one possible addition at first, but my preference is if the will of council is committed to this, we, we, this doesn't mean we're voting for it. It's just saying that committee is at this moment leaning towards and, and looking to debate and approve this. And if there's new information from administration that they want to add into the report that we want to consider, then the will of council could prevail that day. But without that info today, it's hard to, unless we want to go through that discussion and know and give parameters. I, I'm kind of going against what I, I, I want to look at, but I think it can be delivered in other means. And I'm I'm trying to play out how this conversation is going to look like in the next half an hour if we start changing and bring, I appreciate the flexibility, but this is, this is a consensus of council that we're happy with. Any, any new information that could be added to me, you know, outside of, of, of the specific direction, but that's just my thought. Thank you.
Councilor Taylor.
My thought, well, I'm not opposed to the change, but my thought is that we got the parent advisory committee, we got administration, they've come to us, they've given us a report on some pretty good changes here that they always promise to support. Now we're going to do extra to those changes that haven't really been well thought through between different groups of town. We could make this the most safest spot in the whole town, but there might be other parts of the town where that safety money could be better spent than at that particular corner. Truly, administration would like the ability to go back and look at the other safety initiatives around the town to see where that money could be well spent rather than just wing it in this meeting without any sort of detailed cost estimates or detailed safety analysis.
Thank you, Councilor Taylor. So committee, we do have a proposed motion. So if there is a will to change the motion, I look to committee member to voice that. If not, we call to question, Councilor McGee.
Only the question that I'll pose is because it'll impact how I vote. A question for administration, based on what the mayor had suggested, I would hope administration could come back with a high level, you know, expression of what that upgraded light system might cost, so I could consider that on May the third. Is that the intention of administration if this, if this direction were to pass?
Councilor McGee.
Sir, through you to the members of the committee, yes, assuming that we could get a, a strong estimate on the cost of those two standards, that would be presented as an option for consideration of council on May third.
Thank you. Councilor McGee, committee, anything further before we call to question? Okay, nothing. It's still the same exact proposed motion that was put forward by Councilor Hauss. Okay, I'm not going to read it again. I already read it. It's quite long. It hasn't changed. Committee, all those in favor? That's carried unanimously. Do you have anything further before we move on to our next, Councilor Race?
Thank you, sir. So should the old lights be removed? What happens to them? Are they utilized somewhere else in town? Or solve them, or what do we look?
I see O'Handlon, I'm not sure if you're prepared at this point to respond to that since it just came out of the discussion.
I, so based on my practice with other communities and Winston can certainly speak to this if he wishes, but we would typically hold on to these and look to utilize those appropriately and safely in another location. The technology remains viable in the correct, in the correct application of the correct location.
Councilor Race, anything further before we move on? Councilor Russo.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Chair. Just to add to I C O Hamlin's comment, we do have similar posts like that where we are managing our traffic signaling. So if anything gets run over, we could repurpose that elsewhere in the town. So it would not be obsolete or us the way in our public works yards. It can be repurposed, even if we do not reposition them to the location proposed in tonight's report.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. Any, Councilor Hauss?
Um, just a quick question about in where they're at currently on Mountain Street with that tree in the way. Is that going to be dealt with? Because I could see it clearly in the, in the picture there that one of the the posts is covered up by the tree. So I guess in the meantime, you know, it's going to be there still until we move them. Uh, if that can be dealt with, I think that would help the safety of that area as well. So just, just a question to administration.
Sir, through you to a member Hauss and to, to all of, all of the committee. The land use bylaw does anticipate, does envision sightline protection at all intersections. And so we would have to take a look at the possibility, and I just want to simply say only the possibility at this time of enforcement of that action at that, at this location. I, I will share that anytime we try to undertake something like this, we're going to get shown ninety-eight other locations in the town where very similar things are in play. And so that's the difficulty of getting here. But we do have sightline regulations on private property, and that speaks to vegetation landscaping offenses at these sightlines. We can take a look at that here and see if that's something that needs to be implemented or enforced here to ensure public safety.
Anything further? Just before we move on to five point two, I had a question. It's regarding the, the audio. Is it possible to get audio from this television as well as that one? This one seems to be the only one that's, uh, that's outputting any audio. Mostly for consideration of Councilor Race.
Oh, we're not heard now here. So we will have to check that.
Didn't sound like we were getting any audio from this one. Okay. That will bring us to five point two short-term rental bylaw number one one six two. I see.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the members of the committee. We are on page nine of your agenda package. And as the members will recall, the short-term rentals bylaw, that is bylaw eleven sixty-two, has had first reading and proceeded through the public hearing process. After that public hearing process, there was a tremendous amount of input and follow-up, what input from the public and follow-up from the planning and development staff, which is being brought back for the consideration of the committee at this time. And I'm going to ask Ms. Walker to take us through this commencing on page nine. Oh, you're, you're muted, Lorraine.
Thank you, C A O Hamlin, three to council. Can everyone hear me okay? Excellent. Yeah. So just to reiterate, what C A O Hamlin just said is that after the public hearing was held on March fifteenth, council heard that most operators and hosts that were present were not opposed to a bylaw regulating short-term rentals within our community. However, they did express some common key concerns. After the public hearing and during the regular meeting, council made some motions that have been addressed within the report tonight. I'll go in to just highlight them. Uh, council had wanted to reinstate the non-principal residents into the short-term rentals bylaw, and the requirement for a local property manager be designated that has timely access to the premises and authority to make decisions to the premises as well as rental agreement at all times. This will create a two-tiered license application for business license, which would be for the persons who live in their home as well as the persons who rent out their entire home. The report reflects the cost breakdown. However, in the report, should council wish to increase the fee for the non-principal residents, administration is recommending a yearly fee of five hundred and sixty dollars as opposed to two hundred and eighty-five for our town residents. Uh, the second item was, um, council heard that the requirement for hardwired smoke and carbon monoxide alarms were an inconvenience and time-consuming and costly to obtain an electrician. The purpose is to provide common signaling so that the activation of one alarm causes all alarms to sound at all levels in the house. It was reiterated by the fire chief that smoke and carbon monoxide alarms must be interconnected as per the Alberta Building Code. Further to research, the Alberta Building Code does now accept products and systems that are on the market as alternatives to hardwiring, which can be installed by the homeowners with a Bluetooth adapter or wireless models and are, of course, a less cost. The third item was with regards to bed and breakfast. Just to reiterate that bed and breakfasts are not a standalone bylaw. They are already included within the land use bylaw ten eighty-eight. The difference is that the length of accommodation and can only be operated by the principal residents. These were the original, this like the bed breakfast originally referred a primary dwelling offering tourist accommodation with a meal. Tourist accommodation has evolved over time, and we know that bed and breakfasts are also advertised on short-term rental platforms. Administration is recommending that bed and breakfast be merged with short-term rentals for principal residents only. Parking was a concern. Currently, the land use bylaw requires one off-street parking stall per guest room. To help alleviate parking limitations expressed by existing operators and hosts, administration is recommending one off-street parking stall per two guest rooms. As it relates to non-principal residents parking, this is regulated through the traffic bylaw ten twenty-three. Administration is recommending that the operator hosts do everything possible to provide designated off-street parking stalls for their guests. If this cannot be achieved, then they, and they use street parking, they must be aware of any parking restrictions, or they could be issued a tick, a fence ticket or toll. The last item was the identification sign or sticker on the exterior of an accommodation. Should council wish to require this still, administration recommends a standard customized sticker that the town would produce and provide to the operators and the hosts as part of their approved business license package. This can create consistency and fairness for all operators and hosts. And within the report, there are just some samples and that can be discussed further. So therefore, this evening, the administration is recommending that committee agree to these recommended amendments and direct administration to bring bylaw number eleven sixty-two forward to the regular meeting of council on May seventeenth to receive second reading as amended and give third and final reading at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Committee, if there are any comments, questions, objections? Councilor Hauss, then Councilor LeBeere.
Yeah, I just have a question to, I guess this would go to fire chief. Like in regards to the fire alarms, smoke detectors. That's, uh, this requirement, there's no limitation on the age of house. Because that was a discussion, I think, last time we talked about the age of the home. And can you speak to that?
Yes, and to be, through the chair to answer that question. To be clear, in a residential home, the age of the house does determine whether you need to have interconnected smoke detectors or smoke alarms. As soon as you create a rental property or a short-term rental property or a hotel-type situation, it is the law, it's in the code, the building code that they have to have interconnected. There is the option of using Bluetooth or wireless detectors that are interconnected, and that comes at a substantial less cost than hardwiring an older home. Uh, in newer homes, it, it's a requirement to have them interconnected already. So uh, it's a non-issue if they're relatively new building. If they're an older building that has been in existence for a while, they are still required to have that interconnectability because they are renting that property out.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Hauss, Councilor LeBeere, and then Councilor Taylor.
Thanks. My question, page three of five, we're starting with the parking. So we're going to, we're going to require a parking stall for every two rooms if it's in your personal residence. But if it's not, then we're not going to require any off-site parking. Is that what this says?
Mr. Strishel.
Yes, thank you through chair to rest of council. That is correct. And that is because the requirement for a home-based business for a residential home at the principal residence is the off-street parking stall. So it's attached to the, the home business application.
Councilor LeBeere, would you want to follow up?
Sure. I mean, it doesn't seem fair. It doesn't make sense, but if it, if that's why it did, it would seem to me that if you're going to do it to one category of this, uh, of this business community, you do it to all. I mean, if, 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 if people visiting, we want to get them off the street, we've got to require that there's off-street parking. It changes me.
Do you want a motion to amend or anything, or?
I'm, I'm curious. I mean, does that in the minds of others? Is that an issue? Not an issue?
Uh, okay, so I have Councilor Taylor in queue, but I've it seems to have raised a, a side discussion. So maybe we'll, we'll stay on the, on the topic of the off-site parking in terms of non-principal residents until that's resolved, if that's okay. So I'm going to go Councilor Taylor, Councilor McGee, and then Mayor Michaels.
Totally, totally agree. Not fair. Both should have off-street parking. However, if you actually read the bylaw, bylaw doesn't separate it up. Bylaw that we've been given doesn't separate it up for principal or non-principal residents. It says that regardless of which one it is, provision of one off-street parking space per two guest rooms is required. I read this like three times. I don't see how it's separated. So I'm not sure how the comments in the package correlate to the comments in the actual bylaw that we've given, because I don't see a separation. That's kind of a question.
Yeah. So can we go to administration to see if we can get some additional clarity on that? I see you, Hamlin.
Sir, through you to the members of the committee at the whole, and Ms. Walker can speak to this as well. Um, I believe what you have attached to today's package in bylaw number eleven sixty-two is the bylaw that received first reading. And so we are pulling and asking council to speak to these possible changes that will be included and incorporated into. So we haven't incorporated everything we're proposing. We're waiting for the direction of, of council on this matter when it comes back to council. Ms. Walker, is that correct?
Thank you, C A O Hammond. That is correct. I did, however, highlight in red this, the changes that council has. Highlight in red this, the um changes that council has asked for. And so I have added that now that this should say principal residents only. Provisions of one, so that should be separated if if we move ahead with these amendments, correct? And if I might, if I may, just to um. To let council know that under the land use bylaw, we have to regulate land use and. In, in that, when we are issuing a home-based business, we have to regulate. Parking, and that is why we are required to have those off-street parking stalls. And the short-term rentals, non-principal residents are not under the land use file, they're going to be their own separate bylaw. And. We know that people will park on the street, but at their risk, um. If they adhere to all the parking restrictions. Um, then, you know, hopefully they're fine if they move their vehicle within seventy-two hours, because we know that happens now. Um, so, but we don't want to. Open it up for everyone, because then we could end up with some real issues in some neighborhoods and cause some, some. Some situations where there is going to be increased traffic and congestion.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Um, just before we move on to councillor McGoon, councillor Michaels, I, I'm still unclear on that. Because like councillor Taylor says, the bylaw still says provision of one off-street parking space per two guest rooms is required. And it doesn't make any differentiation between residential, uh, sorry, non-residential and residential, so. I, I understand that it's a requirement of the. Of the uh home-based business bylaw, so that's fine, but the, the question was, you know, should it apply to uh. To a non-principal residence, a short-term rental provider as well. And the way I read the bylaw applies to both, I think that's what councillor Taylor was saying too.
However, this was without change, these amendments included, this was like CEO and Hammond said, this was. Issued first reading, oh, sorry, at first reading. Um, this bylaw was based on principal residents only, and that's what, why item. T refers to one, one off-street parking stall per two guest rooms, because that was based on principal residents only. Until we, we recently at the public hearing. Um, heard from council with the following motions that they want to now include the non-principal residents, so that. Would need to be updated as well in the bylaw to reflect that. Thank you.
That, that might be on me, it was my understanding that all the motions that council made were reflected in this. Version of the bylaw, that's what was in red.
Correct, and I missed that one, and that's why I reiterated that, yes, we would need to specify those and separate them in the bylaw. I apologize for missing that.
No, we don't. Okay. Uh, I'll go to councillor McGoon and then councillor Mayor Michaels.
I'm good to withdraw right now, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councillor McGoon, Mayor Michaels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. Yeah, ultimately, I think section T, if there's a will of council to make it even on both sides, that we'll leave it that way. Uh, and I, if there's consensus, I'll support. Uh, making it for non-primary and primary residents, both would have the same parking. Um, restrictions. Uh, if that's the will, so. Thank you.
Mayor Michaels.
I, I do have a follow-up.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
So I, I guess my question to administration and thinking this, there is, is part of the logic. Behind a differential between. Uh, one off-street parking space per two guest rooms for non-principal, principal residents. Or, sorry, for uh principal residents and. Not having it right now for a non-principal, is it the idea that, you know, most of these houses may have parking pads in front of the house? And so it's assumed that. The guests are gonna utilize those because it's not the principal residence. Uh, of the people who are renting them out, is that, is that part of the logic there? To administration.
Uh, thank you through to chair, through to council. Not necessarily, um, we do require in the land use bylaw that you must maintain two parking stalls for your residents. If you live in the home, of course, and then. We're recommending that you have one stall per guest rooms. Per two guest rooms on your site, not including the garage in the street. Under your home occupation permit that you would be issued as well as your business license. Um, so no, like a. If you actually have a whole house, entire house that you're renting. Most likely, if the residents aren't living there, most likely, there's going to be additional parking in front of the, in the driveway. Um, so it might alleviate having to park on the street. Uh, but we know depending on how the short-term rentals are set up, whether people access them from the rear or the side of their home or what have you. Will dictate where they wanna park the car, sometimes they park on the street. Even if they do have a designated spot. Uh, on a parking pad or, or in the driveway. Um. Does that add to your question, councillor McGoon?
Uh, I think, yes, to an extent, I guess. I, a case study would help me understand it a little bit more, so if I may. Uh, if I had, say, a five-bedroom home. Uh, that I was renting out and it wasn't my principal residence. Uh, and it had a, a pad in front of the house, the pad really doesn't come into play. I take five bedrooms, I'm gonna divide it, you know, essentially by two. Uh, I don't know if I round up or not, I would assume I probably do, so. Am I going to need three off-street parking stalls for that five-bedroom house?
No, you will, the bylaw only requires two for the dwelling at all times, whether you have five-bedroom house or two-bedroom house.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, I'm gonna go, sorry, before I go to the back committee and go to ICU, I'll let me get something like that.
Thank you, sir, yeah, and possibly it's to, to come around and then see if I can help member McGoon a bit here on, on this. And so. I believe from a planning and development perspective, when it's not the principal dwelling. There isn't the possibility of the operator, their children, and those two. Vehicles already expected to be parked there. And. Now we're adding additional parking to account for the rooms. Um, I believe that's the intent of administration here, and I, and I see, I see Ms. Walker nodding her head. I, I think possibly just we should clarify though, Ms. Walker, is it correct? That non-resident or residential, that the maximum number of additional parking is. Two parking stalls, so we had the five-bedroom discussion just a moment ago. So let's, well, let me make it clear, theoretically, if there was a six-bed, a six-bedroom house. That was operated by a property manager, it would still only require two parking stalls, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I, I think we would want the bylaw to state. That it, it, to a maximum of two or something to that effect, so it's not confusing, unless it's desired to have the additional parking.
Okay, committee, we're still gonna stay on this for a bit, I believe, councillor Leveson.
Yeah, I mean, my intent would be that we would need three parking stalls for a five-bedroom house, I mean. Uh, the, part of the problem is that these places can get to be inconvenient for neighbors. And I think everything we can do to make sure that this business that's being run in a residential neighborhood doesn't get into the neighbor's face. And so, I mean, if, 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 if we need parking per room, then I think there should be parking per room.
Thank you, councillor Leveson. Any, anything further on this before we switch gears? Councillor Taylor.
Well. Get really confused, just like, it does say that in the bylaw, like, that we'd be given, but apparently this is not the final word, it won't be be given. Changes that are in here that we should have looked at before. Right, like there's the tax two per thing, that's not. There's the two per.
Well, I like it the way it's written.
Well, I like it perfectly the way it's written, I don't want it to change, that's my point. But that's not what I hear. So do I need to put a motion to make this, the words that you've given, stay for parking?
Uh, the procedural questions are ICU handling, because I'm a little bit confused too. To, to me, this is, what we're debating is what we have before us, not what we should have been given. I don't believe, yeah, so.
Sir, through you to, to all the members of the committee, Ms. Walker, in terms of clarification on the parking discussion, so. Uh, to all of, to all of the committee, we are bringing forward proposed changes to the bylaw. And certainly when we come back to the bylaw on May third, I'm gonna just ask that Ms. Walker bring it in a track changes format. So we can clearly identify what changes between first reading and second reading. Um, and so we'll make sure that we capture the intent of, of council, and I apologize for any confusion here tonight on that. Um, what I do hear from council is a, a request or desire not to limit. The amount of stalls, so again, theoretically, theoretically, a six-bedroom house being operated by a property manager. Needs to have a minimum of three onsite parking stalls that can be utilized by guests. Um, and will the language I'm, I, to. To councillor Taylor's comment, I don't believe we need a motion, we will make sure it's more clearly communicated to council for May third.
Uh, yeah, and councillor Taylor can respond, and then we'll go to councillor McGoon.
I, I think you're correct, although I will speak for myself. But the other part that I think we would probably occur on is that the, the words written here, that only one off-street parking stall for two rooms was okay.
So it sounds like there's. Uh, uh, an expressed will anyway, it hasn't been achieved through consensus, but it sounds like there might be a will of committee to uh. Uh, uphold the understanding that there is one off-street parking per two guest bedrooms. And that it applied to both principal and non-principal residents. So my suggestion would be just because of the confusion that's around this, that that be captured in a motion, so when it comes back to us on May third. Uh, we, we, we can see that and there's a direction to administration, that that's the accurately captured rule of council. So if that is a thought and something somebody wants to throw, there is a motion, uh, I, I would suggest that's a good idea. Councillor McGoon.
Yeah, and I'm only gonna speak to uh my opinion based around what I've heard of the parking right now. Uh, and some of the public feedback we had last time, is that I. Respectfully, I do think there's a bit of a difference. Uh, between somebody's principal residence where they have a suite. Uh, and another residence that they don't live in full-time. Um, you know, I, I try to think about the setup of the majority of our houses in this town. Um, and I think about sort of how difficult it would be to rent out a couple of rooms downstairs. Um, you know, if the family who lives there is already utilizing the, you know, the parking pad. And then we're gonna mandate that they have to use, you know, uh. Maybe one or two off-street stalls, well, those properties don't have that. And unless I'm misunderstanding this bylaw, you know, if I have, you know, two or three bedrooms downstairs and I'm gonna rent them out. Uh, it sounds like I need, you know, and it's my principal residence. If I need a couple extra off-street parking stalls and I'm already using my pad, well, then my. My idea for a home business is, is gone. And I, 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 I don't necessarily agree with that. I think that there, there is a bit of a difference, if I'm using a residence as essentially a business and I don't live there. Versus, you know, I, I rent out my basement, doesn't wanna make a few extra bucks, that's just my, my personal feelings, thanks.
Thanks, councillor McGoon, uh, just before I go to Mayor Michaels and then councillor Leveson.
Sorry, sir, I'm fine.
Okay, Mayor Michaels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, I'm not sure how we'll gain consensus for this, um, but I feel like there's, there's two elements here. And I, and I, and I do wanna thank councillor Taylor for saying he was like speaking for himself. Because I know ICU Hammond had alluded to that there was an appetite to have unlimited parking. I actually share a bit of the same concern as councillor McGoon, if it's not your dwelling. I like. Keeping it the way it's worded now and maxing it at two, because that dwelling does not have residents who live there. They're forced, if they have a three-bedroom room, they're forced to do two parking stalls, stalls, and they still have the street. For me, if, if it gives two parking stalls, the street, no one else lives there. That to me is, is decent, that's pretty close, I am afraid of the, the parties that come with six cars, but that's. That's gonna be a bit more challenging, but if you're, if there's nobody. Living there and it's two. Two rooms, I'm, I'm actually, I'm, I'm going to support, I, I believe. The, to, to, to keep it the way it's exactly written, nothing else, but the way it's exactly written. Also maxes it at two, because that our land use bylaw speaks to that, so. That's something to clarify for the group, that if you're on the opposing side, I believe we'd have to give direction that there's no maximum. Because currently, there'd be a maximum, is my understanding. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mayor Michaels, councillor Leveson.
And I don't mean this combative, but my, my comment is that, so in one instance. Um, you say, oh, well, if you're gonna be using all of your parking for you and your family, you can let your businesses' parking spill out onto the street. Whereas if you're not using that, then your business parking has to be on your property. I mean, if you're gonna park your business on a public street, in my view, that's a problem. If you wanna rent out a couple of rooms in your basement. It's not up for your neighbors to not have a parking stall, because somebody's parking there because you're earning rent on your property. These are, these are businesses that are happening in residential neighborhoods, my view of it is. You err on the side of the people who aren't involved in that business. Uh, these places generate significant revenue. And if some of that needs to be taken to, to build another parking stall, then that's what I think this business should. That's my humble feeling on it, because when I knocked on doors, people who lived beside these places said, it sucked.
So, committee, again, just to be able to move forward without just continuing to talk around the subject, if there's a will to make a change or not make a change or whatever. I, I would suggest that there's a motion thrown out there and then we can get the will of council and move on. Maybe councillor Leveson.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, I will make one. And I don't know who I'm directing. Administration at this point, uh.
It's likely just a motion to amend, to drop the level. If that's what you're going for.
Sure, yes, okay, uh.
Item T, yeah.
To amend the be, well, I'll get that section. Are we talking? Higher parking section is.
Four-one-T, four-one-T, correct.
Four-one-T?
He is a Tom.
Four-one-T.
That will be correct.
Um, uh, to require. Parking, a parking stall. For every two rooms. I think that's it, just period.
In the residence. So if I may, councillor Leveson, that's, that's pretty much what it says now. Oh, it says provision of one off-street parking space per two guest rooms is required.
Okay, not to be limited by the land use bylaw. Is that the right wording? Sure. Yes, councillor Taylor.
The other confusion we had, you might wanna put words, is that there'd be no difference between parking between the principal and the non-principal residents. I think that's what we got.
Uh, that is what I meant, but if it's.
We wanna say that because of all the confusion.
Sure.
Uh, yeah, if that was the intention, councillor Leveson, I would, yeah, I would suggest adding regardless of principal or not.
Okay, so after the word two rooms, we need to add the words then. Uh, whether principal or non-principal. Short-term rental.
You understand the intent, ICU Hamlin?
Yes.
Non-principal.
Yeah. Short-term rental. I think whether it's W H E.
I think whether it's W H E.
W H E A O. Yeah.
No, W R E G.
Oh, sorry.
ICO Ham wants to sure to sit down, review and make sure it's legislatively compliant before it comes back. They understand the intent. Okay, committee, we have a motion, so we'll keep the discussion to the motion for now until it's called question. Any, are there any comments, questions? Okay, oh, Counselor Taylor?
I too heard in my campaign, people upset with the parking. People weren't affected, that people that were nearby these businesses that were affected by the parking that was going on in the streets because it's people that have businesses didn't provide for the parking of their business. And to me, it's an obligation if you have any business, you should have that parking there. Say, regardless of how many RBs you've got parked there.
Mayor Michaels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm struggling with this one, but I may have been convinced with the concept that you're running a business in a residential area. I'm trying to think of the examples. For smaller homes, I just, it'll be quote unquote, ugly to have to build these parking pads. But at the same time, if there is a seven bedroom home with only two parking spots, that's my challenge, but I, I, I don't know, in hearing all of the debate, I think I could support this this way. And yeah, then I'll give it another week before it comes to regular and see if there are any scenarios. It's a, it's a challenging one to me. It's not a hill to die on. If it's extra conditions for somebody to run a business in a residential area, I kind of like that now. So, thank you.
Mayor Michaels, go to Counselor Taylor and then Counselor McGee.
If it helps you during the hearing or collect the information for the hearing, we, we end, end booking at the bylaw, we do know that there's only one booking per, per unit. And that the people that did, did say that it's very unusual for, usually everybody shows up in one car. It's like unusual that two cars shows up. Extremely unusual that more than two cars would show up because it's only one booking unit per house. And we wanted one booking unit per house. So you didn't get that mix of, say, teenage boys in one room and a family in the other room, then we're sharing the bathroom or whatever it is. So that, that's going to be extremely unusual or just actually going to be a need there. Parking stalls, that was the information I got.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Counselor McGee?
Like the mayor, I'm struggling with this one. I think the area that I'm struggling with the most right now is that last section where it says not to be limited by the land use bylaw. I, I'm not sure legislatively of sort of the impact of that and sort of how that plays out. Yeah, if, if our ICO wants to comment on that, I, I just, I don't know.
ICO Hamlin?
If I could, sir, through you to the members of the committee, land use bylaws, they restrict all sorts of development. Here, the size of your lot determines the site coverage, your setbacks. It determines how much parking you can put on and off a property. It determines that if you can have a suite or a duplex or condominium. So there are all sorts of regulations that govern development throughout the town and any municipality. All this is doing is just confirming that. And the intent is always, and I like the language I'm hearing from counsel, from the committee, excuse me. The intent is simply to protect the rights, particularly in residential areas that are facing property owners. And trying to balance that off one against the other. So making accommodation for certain uses within residential areas, but putting conditions in place. And, and that does mean that it would not be unusual that certain people are going to come and make application. And let's say theoretically, and speaking with staff are told they need an additional parking stall. And they take a look at access and fire hydrant, street, street furniture access, and they go, I can't put another parking stall in here. Well, then they, they have one fewer bedrooms and that's just a function of how the land use bylaw operates and how it controls development within. It's not unusual. It does happen quite frequently. And it is intended, intended to balance the rights of everybody within these residential areas. So I, to, to Counselor McGee, to your, to your comment, we would certainly bring this back and ensure that anything that we propose here for second reading, it complies with legislation. It doesn't contradict legislation. And so that's why I'm not uncomfortable with the, the language as worded.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McGee and Counselor Reese.
Thank you, Chair.
Any further? Great. We can see the motion again, please. Counselor LeBerge has moved to direct administration to amend the draft by law 1162, section 5.0, 4.1 T to require parking stall for every two rooms where the principal and non-principal short term rental and not to be limited by the land use bylaw 1088. Committee, all those in favor? Let's carry on this. So back to the main due, I think I had Counselor Taylor there a long time ago.
Smoke and CO2 detectors have to be interconnected. Was it only the smoke detectors through the building? Cause when I look at section 32420, it just prefers smoke detectors. And that's the section of the building code that's quoted. So does everything have to be interconnected together? Or this just the smoke detectors have to be interconnected together? Why if everything has to be interconnected together? Does the building code number that's referenced only refer smoke detectors?
Counselor Taylor, ICO Hamlin?
Thank you, sir. I'm just gonna ask, Mac, are you still with us?
Yes.
I'm going to try and just, I'm not sure if you've heard Counselor Taylor's question, so it's a good question. But in terms of the interconnectivity of smoke alarms, we do understand that to be a requirement under the act, particularly in relation to the rental rooms, regardless of the age of construction. Counselor Taylor, and he can correct me, is wondering, is there a similar requirement for interconnectivity of the CO detector?
I honestly, to answer that question to the chair, I honestly don't know. I, to my knowledge, only the smoke alarms are regulated. There is a requirement for CO alarms too.
Hi?
Can I get back to you on that? I'll do a quick search here in the building code.
If, if I could, sir, and will allow that. I do not believe the CO detectors need to be interconnected.
I don't, I don't think they do either.
Well, then, may I?
Yeah, Counselor Taylor?
I'm wondering, CEO, if you might want to look at the wording of this section. Because the wording of this section could be interpreted as that everything has to be interconnected together. CO2 and smoke detectors. And there's another, there's a number, number of problems with wording of this section. That's one problem. The other problem with the wording of the sections, it ties us to a particular date for building code. You know, and building, this has been last for years, so the building code, so we might want to generically refer to the building codes at the time.
But hey, Counselor Taylor, sorry, don't mean to cut you off, but just so everybody can see, it's 5.0, 4.1 M. Sorry, Counselor Taylor, do you have anything further?
Just, just the other point with it, rather than trying to have a date, maybe we should be a little more generic when we refer to the, to the building codes, otherwise, I mean, 2000 building codes are going to change as we go into the future. Unless you want to change this every time the building code changes, we want to consider that. And we might want to consider the fact that the way this is worded says that the smoke and the carbon monoxide detectors have to be interconnected. And I'm sure that's not what we need because that's not the section that you brought us.
Thank you, Counselor. ICO Hamlin?
Sir, through you to the members of the committee, and I appreciate Counselor Taylor's comment on this one. My, my suggestion to administration is that we would take 5.0, 4.1 sub M and break it into three items. And I'm going to suggest the following. The first being the insurance of interconnectivity, either by Bluetooth adapter or wireless of the smoke alarms. And we'll keep it generic. I do agree, we don't want to reference a particular issue of the, of the safety code act, only to have it subsequently amended. The second one I'm going to suggest is separately deal with the requirement for carbon monoxide detectors. And then the third one being specifically about the requirement of, of marked fire extinguishers. I, I understand the intent around occupant, rental occupant safety on this matter. But we'll break these into three separate ones and we will confirm on, I'm 99% sure on the CO detectors. But we'll confirm that when we bring this back for next Tuesday.
So Counselor Taylor, again, I would suggest if that's what you want to see, that it's counter to the motion. Make sure that there's a will of the committee that they agree that that's the change they want to see. I'll go to, I'll go to Ms. Walker in the meantime. Ms. Walker?
Yes, thank you through to Chair, through to Council. While Mac is looking at the building code, when I was checking under the new products out there, first alert, I was just checking now, first alert carries these interconnected Bluetooth systems. And I was sure that they had said interconnected carbon monoxide as well. So, but again, yes, we would have to confirm that. First alert.
Yeah, thank you.
I have it.
We'll go to Mr., sorry, Chief DeBoer Draper's. Able to shed a little light on the discussion.
Okay, so the stand data that was issued, an information bulletin, that is with regards to internet, interconnectivity of smoke alarms and carbon monoxide detectors. If they are a combined unit, they do need to be interconnected. If they're, if they're not, you just need a CO alarm on the level of the fire burning or the furnace room. The fire, fire burning appliance. So if there's a, if there's a furnace room or a fireplace, it requires a smoke CO alarm. But if they're a combined unit, which are available now, they have to be interconnected. And I, I printed off that copy. I'll make sure that it's attached to the report for Ms. Walker.
Thank you, Chief DeBoer Draper. So I guess I would have a question for administration and because Counselor Taylor's concerns are addressed by code, if the head council's opinion doesn't really matter since they're addressed by code unless council wants to wants to mandate limitations that exceed those that are in the code. Probably not something that needs to be captured by motion because it, it has to be code compliant. There's no choice. Is that correct?
Sir, through you to the members of the committee, that is correct. However, administration can better explain sub M and we will undertake to do that when this comes back.
Counselor Taylor?
May I just confirm that the intent is to follow the building code?
Yes, we, we absolutely have to. We can exceed the building code, but that's a whole different thing of enforcement and compliance on pregnant. We really don't want to go there. So the intent is that the town in this matter will meet the requirements of the safety code act.
I don't see the need for a motion. I mean, this is a simple wording, something that smoke and carbon detectors could be installed as per the applicable building codes at the time of construction. That's pretty simple.
Counselor Taylor, can I be anything further on the smoking carbon monoxide detector? Committee, anything further regarding the bylaw? Counselor, or sorry, Mayor Michaels and then Counselor Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess this is perhaps our opportunity. Since we reverted back from a non-principal residence being able to operate, now I'm curious of what do we want to do as a council? What do we charge them? What the fee is? There's a recommendation on page two of the report to potentially increase it from 285 to 560. For myself, other, some other communities charge short term rentals. Their non-residential tax rate can more charges three times the residential rate. Because you're operating a business essentially, especially if you, well, for either, whether it's your principal or non-principal. I think there's two ways to tackle that. It's either looking at the fee. Is the fee of 560 that administration recommends or, or that what, what we look at? That's the conversation. I, at the very least, want to approve the fee of 560. If there's no tax implication or we're not looking to, to change their mill rates at all. I even think the primary resident fee of 160 a year is quite low. So those are my thoughts. At the very least, I'd like to change it to 560 and looking to see if there's any appetite of council to do anything on that matter.
Mayor Michaels? Okay, so we'll confine discussion to Mayor Michaels. Matter for now. Counselor Taylor?
More than happy to respond. I think increasing an off principal residence license fee to 560 is punitive and probably unnecessary as we now have added a requirement for a property manager. So that should address a lot of the concern we have. If at a later date, we need to increase it for maybe extra enforcement or whatever, fine. But I say punitive because it's not based on hard locally available data. But rather on the assumption that one form of management is to be discouraged. Principal residence form. So I don't agree with that.
Counselor Taylor, Counselor LeBerge?
I don't think the two things are related at all. I mean, businesses pay taxes at 170% of a person. So on a $4,000, on a $4,000 tax bill, a business would pay another $2,800, say pay $6,800. So if that's in place for every hotel and business that operates in town, I go back to it again. I say, you're going to operate that place as a business, should none of that come? Paying residential rates for garbage collection, paying residential rates for water, residential rates for taxation, and you're running a business. No other business in town has that advantage. I, I don't know why we would do that. It just doesn't make any sense to me. And it just goes down to a, to a, a level of playing field.
Discussion? Motion, discretion? Motion? Michaels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will throw out a motion for discussion that, that, that all short term rentals are charged as a non-residential tax rate. And begin there. That by law 1162 incorporate that all non-principal and principal residents pay non, pay a commercial or non-residential tax rate.
Priority property tax?
Correct.
And if I can speak to that. Yeah, we'll just. You want to speak to it first or make sure that it goes after first?
Pay a non-resident tax rate?
Correct.
Do you want to specify?
Mr. Chair, the, the amount's already, one, our split rate is 1.72, so it would be 72% higher.
Okay, do you want to speak to it?
Yeah, I, I begin there. I wanted to hear from the rest of council. If, if there's no appetite to change it at all, I want to hear that. If there's an appetite to find something in the middle, we'll hear that. I, I don't even know if this is my preferred choice. I just believe. I, I, I don't even know if this is my preferred choice. Uh, I just believe. That, uh, the way it's currently structured at one sixty and two eighty-five. Uh, per year is just too low and I see other municipalities going. Uh, one direction quite far, some go in the middle. Uh, for me, again, uh, the same concept of parking. If we're going to allow somebody to have a commercial business to. Uh, and, and it's a lucrative, uh, business. Uh, I still want a mechanism to balance the amount. We don't have an, a limited development permits. Uh, I know we're not there yet, but again, it's, it's about finding that balance and creating a, a, a fair playing field with. Whether it's the hotels, uh, in our community or. To, to me, it's important to find that balance in the way it's currently in, uh, the proposed bylaw. I feel like those ratios are simply too low. Uh, so I'll begin with this and see where the will of council lands. Thank you.
Mayor Michaels, Counselor Ray, someone myself.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my question to it, man, is. People who run home businesses like hair, massage, consulting. Are they charged either commercial or?
Sir, through you to the members of the commission, they are not. And I, I would ask for a bit of time for us to con, to, to investigate this further. I am not convinced that we can charge residential properties a non-residential bill rate. I'd have to investigate that further and bring it forward for council. Um, the intent of these uses, whether it's home-based businesses of any level or assortment. And even what we're considering for short-term rentals within residential properties here in the town of. The underlying land use district remains the same. It's residential. And I do not believe the assessor can differentiate that. I will investigate it because I, I'm curious because I, I do hear what, uh, the committee is saying and I. I am aware of how some other communities have addressed this, but I'm not sure that it's been through their tax rate. I think it's been through another avenue and I'd like the opportunity to investigate this further. I, I just have concerns with how this is proposed, but that's strictly, I get the intent. It's just administratively how we would accomplish it that I, I need to investigate some more.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do counsel race. So that was the point that I was going to bring up to, I had concerns about how. That would be applied if that would require a change in zoning, if that would happen, what that would. Entail because my understanding is the communities that do. Do it that way. Every zone portions of their community has mixed use or direct control or something where they allow. Uh, businesses, regular businesses in zone, in areas that were previously zoned as residential. This, I, I would. Personally, I, I would like to, for I C O Hammond to not take off down the path of, uh. Doing investigation on this unless this is something that council gives direction to investigate because. I, I, I too appreciate the intent and understand the intent of it, but I'm concerned that it's, uh. Opening up a can of worms that maybe weren't initially considered in, in trying to bring this forward as a, as an action. Booped, sorry. Did, did, was that direct to I C O?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, with that being said, and, and Canmore does have, uh, zones, they like nodes that they can do. So it seems like that's conceptually what allows them to do that. With that, if there's no opposition, I withdraw, uh, this direction. Uh, and, and go a different route.
Mr. Chair? Thank you, Mayor Michaels. So committee, Mayor Michaels has requested to withdraw his motions. Is there any opposition to that? Seeing no opposition, that motion's withdrawn. Mayor Michaels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'll put a, a direction on the floor. Uh, that's, uh. Bylaw eleven sixty-two reflects a rate of, uh. Five hundred and sixty dollars for non-resident or non-principal residence annual business, uh, license fee. And if I may speak to them, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, if you just want to have one, make sure that it was captured correctly and then if you want to speak to it. Or if we could see the motion.
So same concept. I'm, I'm trying to gauge the appetite of council on where do we want to begin the first draft? I personally think this number could be, uh, my, my minimum is five sixty. Uh, and I think it can even be higher. And again, it plays to that, the balance of. Uh, you're having a commercial business in a residential area using that property. Uh, and, and albeit difficult to, uh. Make everything equal on, on every level for private businesses, businesses that work out of their homes, short-term rentals. It, it is challenging, but to me, uh, intuitively, uh, it seems that we need a mechanism in order to balance. Uh, that approach. So, uh, for me, I'll, I'll begin with five sixty and see where council's at. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mayor Michaels, I have Counselor Haas.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. I'm going to speak in favor of this and it goes down to a lot of the kinds of verse that about. You know, the fact that they're living in a residence but still paying, you know, residential costs on the garbage and water and all those things. And I think it's reasonable. Uh, compensation, uh, you know, to, to run a business in those residential areas. Um, it's not the principal, principal residence and it is what it is. So, um, I, I would be favored with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. Before I go to Counselor LeBerge, sorry, just quickly, I just want to confirm. Was the five sixty, is that for everyone or is that just for the non-principal residents?
Uh, Mr. Chair, just for the non-principal residents, residents at this time.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor LeBerge.
Uh, yeah, I won't be speaking in favor of this. I don't think it's.
Sorry?
I'm sorry, didn't hear this? I don't think it's time enough.
Thank you, Counselor LeBerge. Committee, anyone else? Both Counselor Taylor and then Counselor Haas, sorry, Counselor McGoon, did I see?
Initially, it went, yeah, please, Mr. Chair.
So Taylor, Haas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah.
Sorry, Taylor, Taylor, Haas.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay. Counselor Taylor?
I just have a question. What, what was the fee that we went to the public hearing?
I believe it was two thousand. Yeah. Seems to be a lot head nodding, so I guess.
Could administration answer the question, please?
Sure. Yep, to administration. What was the original, uh. Uh, non-principal residence fee that council proposed?
Sorry, just one moment, uh, Ms. Walker. Um, we'll have Ms. Walker speak to that. I do want to just clarify. For council on this, no matter what the amount ultimately is. That this will be reflected in the fees and charges by law. So a separate amendment to that fees and charges by law. It won't actually be in this bylaw, so we don't have to always change this bylaw in the future if that changes. Um, Ms. Walker, what were we proposing for the non-residential?
Yes, thank you, uh, C O Hammond through to Chair. Yes, and we ended up, um, uh, revoking that motion at the next meeting and I believe it was two thousand. I don't have it in front of me either. We started out and just kind of threw out numbers and I think it landed on two thousand. And, uh, and then we ended up, um, taking it off the table.
Is that good for now, Counselor Taylor? Well, administration could look into it and come back later, if I'm sure. Later this evening.
My copy of the draft bylaws that were given at the public hearing said that the, uh. License fee was a one-sixty in the document.
That is correct. That is what a business license application fee is for a business. Uh, for in town and for non-resident is two hundred and eighty-five. That's what their existing fees are. As well as seventy-five dollars for a development permit, application for a home-based business. So those are those fees, but the proposed non-residential fee of two thousand was something that council was exploring at the time. And then they decided, no, we're not gonna, um, we're going to take non-residential. Uh, out of the bylaw. And now we've since reinstated it. So now we're looking to see what, what would be a fair charge. I also do want to, uh, remind council too that all. Short-term rentals do require under the provincial law, uh, provincial government, they do have to pay a tourism tax levy now. Um, I don't know what that cost is and, and it, it, it's trying to follow like the, the hotel motel. Tax. Uh, Jen might be able to speak to it because I know that she has to pay that as well.
So, uh, yeah, just before that though, if I, if I may. I believe that when we got first draft, there was a motion that actually passed. That the fee for non-principal residence was going to be two thousand dollars. Or later in that meeting, there was another motion that passed that non-residential short-term rentals were not going to be permitted. At all. So it made that first motion moot. Then we had the public hearing and out of the public hearing came a will of council that I believe that that was that passed. To reinstate the non-principal resident short-term rentals.
Correct, Counselor Stachak. And in the motion made. A council did not specify a number. They just said. Um, that council direct administration to include non-principal residents into the draft bylaw number eleven six-two. And that was at the March fifteenth regular council meeting after public hearing. So we didn't include a, a cost there.
So this fee, whatever it ends up being, five hundred, two thousand dollars is in addition to the business license fee. Sir, like this, through you to the members, this, what we are looking to see. I, i- is there an appetite of the committee for a higher amount for the business license fee? For the residential or non-residential short-term rental provider? So it's not in addition to, it's just in, it's potentially increasing it from a hundred and sixty dollars. To what council may wish to better reflect this activity.
Counselor Taylor? I have Counselor Haas and then Counselor.
I, I guess I just have a question through Counselor LeBerge because he says it's not high enough. And I, I don't want to transpire, but what would be more reasonable? Because I'm not against.
Well, I made the motion at two thousand dollars. And again, I go back to it and I say, if property tax is the gauge. Say an average home tax is three thousand bucks. A business would pay seventy, so another twenty-one hundred dollars. Um, so on a three thousand dollar tax, business paid fifty-one hundred. And, uh, so when I do the math that way, it doesn't take long to get to be a thousand fifteen hundred dollars being the. The differential number. It's preferential to use a number like that and to go to tax. Just gets complicated because it's non-credit. What portion of the house is being rented out? How do we adjust? Do we adjust half the house, quarter of the house? So I guess it'd be really complicated and I think if you use just a simple way to do it.
Thank you, Counselor Haas, Counselor McGoon and then myself.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, regarding the five hundred and sixty, if I could just ask administration. The report on page ten of sixty-two or page two of five of the report. Um, it mentions that administration recommends five hundred and seventy dollars. Uh, based on other communities that charge approximately four hundred dollars more. Um, is, I'm assuming then from that part of the report, this is a, this five hundred and sixty dollars is a bit of a best practice across other communities. Is, is that it?
Thank you through Chair to, to council. Again, there. There are the bigger communities like Calgary, Edmonton, Canmore that, that have these. A lot of other municipalities are slowly trying to integrate. These into, into their community. So there, there's not a lot to go on and everybody's. Kind of all over the map. Um, but this particular, uh, I did notice, uh, Kelowna. Again, not all Alberta, but Kelowna and another B C place were approximately a four hundred dollar difference in that fee. So. I was trying to come up with something that was, um, maybe best practice out there for what there is, which is not a lot on the market at this point, but. Ultimately, it's the will of council in this regard. Thank you.
If, if I may speak to the, the direction, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm, I'm going to support, uh, the mayor's direction that's on the floor right now. I think, uh, five hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, it's a good start. This is a bylaw that we can reexamine at a later date and see if it's necessary to. To increase or decrease, but again, just trying to put on the hat of, okay, five hundred and sixty dollars across the whole year. You know, divided by twelve months. How much are you actually paying for that business every month? Well, if your business isn't turning over a hundred and some dollars every month, maybe it shouldn't be in that business. Right? I think that's really reasonable. I don't know if I'm, I'm comfortable getting up into the thousands at this point. Um, I think five hundred and sixty is a, it's a nice middle ground considering we were. Thinking about not even allowing them to exist at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McGoon. I have myself next. I have a question for Counselor LeBerge. The one question isn't directly related to the. Motion that's before us. It's still relevant because depending on what the answer is, is going to affect how whether I support this motion or not. So Counselor LeBerge, you'd said that, um, five hundred and sixty wasn't enough and that you, you would likely support something higher than that. My question is the, the something that's higher than that, would that apply to the, uh, non-principal owner as well as principal owner? And I ask that because to me, they're both, they're both businesses. They're both operating on the same model. They both have the potential to make. An amount of revenue. The only difference in one model, the owner lives there. The other model, the owner doesn't live there. Counselor LeBerge, that was correct.
I mean, in my mind, they would be exactly the same. Where you live there, you know, when they're, I mean, you're choosing to run a business and, and there are homes where they have. Physically separated the two spaces so that they can operate completely independent to one another. And so I think in that reality, now maybe that number difference, uh, varies because it's not the whole home. But, uh, in general terms, in my mind, those two businesses are equivalent. They're operating. Uh, in the community on public asset.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate.
And just in my humble opinion, of course.
Yeah, no, I wanted to have an understanding because it, like I said, it, it. It affects whether I'm going to support this motion or not. So having heard that, I, I won't be supporting this motion. Because I do agree that it certainly could be higher. Both of those models have the potential to make, you know, significant amount of revenue. Compared to most home-based businesses. So if we're going to look at doing a significant increase. In the non-principal owner fee to be able to operate a short-term rental, I think we need to take a look at the, at the, uh. Principal or principal residence, uh, fee that we're charging as well. And maybe we need to revise that. I, I wouldn't be in support of having a huge differentiation between the two. Because I don't see them as being markedly different business models. To me, the only differences in one, the person lives there. And then the other one, they don't live there. Because council's decided that. The fee structure isn't going to be implemented as punitive model to try and dissuade. Non-residential owners from having short-term rentals. Then that's out of the argument for me. And to me now, it's just impact on services, impact on, on, uh. Uh, on the enjoyment of property by others, by neighbors. So to me, the conversations changed quite a bit. So thank you for that. I'll go to Counselor Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, uh, when we first started talking about this in our first meeting. The information that we had was, um, short-term rentals or home-based businesses like this brought eleven thousand visitors to our town, eleven thousand. So when you think of all those people coming to our town and all that money going. Who are running these establishments, I think five sixty is pretty. So I would not support this one. I may support one with a higher fee.
Thank you, Counselor Reese. Committee, is there anything further? Nothing from committee. If you can see the motion, please. Mayor Michaels has moved that bylaw one-one-six-two reflects a rate of five hundred and sixty dollars for non-principal resident license fee. Committee, all those in favor? Most. That's where it's not carried. Sorry, I had, Counselor Taylor, I had you in queue for. Okay, committee? Could we take five minutes? Could we take five minutes? Turn, yep. I'll call a five-minute recess. We will reconvene at six fifteen.